I have a quorum, need one more.
I'm big enough for two.
Eric's coming in.
Wow, that's funny.
We're missing Sharon, we're waiting for Sharon, wait for Sharon for a couple more minutes.
Eric, you missed a great job. I'll text Sharon. Does anybody have Sharon's cell number handy? Or can you, what's that? Can we put it in the chat?
Just sent it to you, Brian.
Thank you. Alright, so Sharon ought to be here in a moment. While we're waiting, let's get started. So I would like to, do I have, do we have enough of a quorum right now to proceed?
Yeah, we have four, so we can get started.
So I'd like to call, call to order the June 7th Patent Township Planning Meeting. And first item of business is the approval of our minutes from our April 12th and April 5th meeting.
Oh, thank you, getting me in.
Hey Sharon, welcome, we just started, so we're asking, I'm asking for a motion to approve our minutes?
I have one minor correction on the regular meeting minutes. On page five, the meeting, regular meeting adjourned, it says work session adjourned. Other than that, it's fine.
Thank you. Did we get that correction? Item three, so public comments. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to have the floor, if there are any items that's not on our agenda, please speak now.
Brian, I feel, I still think we need a motion and a vote to approve the minutes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so guys, do we have a motion to approve our corrected minutes?
I motion.
Move both sets of minutes.
And, and we have a second?
I heard a second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Minutes approved. Next up are our public comments. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to comment on something that's not included in our agenda this afternoon, now is the time to do so.
Question about the letter that came from a resident that Nicole sent out this afternoon. Should that be read or not?
I believe it probably should be. And I don't know, let me look at, what's that letter referencing?
Is, well, let me pull it up.
Protesting the building of the, all the grocery store and destroying trees that keep the air fresh and clean.
That, with all new development, I think the planning commission should make efforts to encourage builders to incorporate solar and geothermal energy saving solutions to help address carbon emissions and energy conservation. The ideal, least expensive time to install geothermal systems is during new construction phases. This should go hand in hand with new housing developments too. What ways can the planning commission further incentivize builders to be more environmentally conscious and friendly here in Patent Township? And then he went on about the new big project like Audi's and announced many hospitals doing to contribute to climate action and sustainability. All the carbon sequestering trees that were at Aldi's site are now cleared. That's far more concerning than getting another grocery store and more chain stores. Our communities need to do more, take bigger steps in changing light bulbs. That's from Jason Kuzarski, Patent Township resident.
Thank you, Jim, Jim, so that, that is a lot of, lot of issues. I'm hearing that there's a lot in that letter, not just one item, but multiple. Does, was he not able to be here this afternoon? I guess I didn't read the letter.
I guess so, he's not here, so.
So I'm a little perplexed on what we're, what we're to do with that. That is a letter with a lot of items in it, so I'm appreciative of all the residents. I think all, we would all concur that we love the feedback, but I, do we want to dive into that deeper into the planning session?
I don't think so.
No, it's all, it's all too late. Unfortunately, Aldi's has been approved, as has been the mini hospitals, so I'm not sure what we can do at this time, but they're, they're excellent points and we should probably keep them in mind going forward.
Correct, as far as Doug, Doug can confirm, but as far as free, we don't have a say in that. Property owner can do what they want.
It's true, but we could encourage them to be a little more conservative than they are.
Didn't get very far in Patent Crossing.
Beg your pardon?
It didn't get very far in Patent Crossing.
Yeah, but we, we can't jump in and the, and the, you know, it's, it's the last inning, so if we, if we do want to move forward, you're correct. Patent Township, that, that train has left the station, but there will be more development and now is the, you know, so if we want to talk about future developments, but I think the residents, you know, I guess they're just an awareness that we can't upon, at this late in the game, it's too late, we, we can't just make accommodations, we have to have a, an orderly fashion, so moving forward, if the, you know, perhaps there's some things that we need to discuss. And I think that it's, how do we respond back to this resident? Because it sounds like they have some, they may have some valuable input. Doug, did we reach out to them and thank them for their letter? What do we do with this?
It's up to you, generally, we just thank them for their comments. If you want to take some action with it, you can, you can pick it up at some other point.
I think in our defense, the planning commission.
In-depth discussion on anything, it ought to come up as a, you know, it needs to be framed a little better, let me put it that way.
I would agree, and so I think right now it's appropriate to thank that individual for the letter and, and we can talk further on it. But to receive a letter the day of our planning commission of that magnitude with that many issues, I don't even know how to address it. Other than, other than to say thank you.
Just a short, quick note, the, far as I'm concerned, even moving forward, our hands are pretty much tied, all we can do is ask
Yeah. Yeah, so.
We don't have control over a lot of stuff.
Yeah, but just like you, Jim, I mean, you're here on the planning commission and you got involved, so maybe this is someone who can serve on the planning commission years to come. Alright, um, I just want to make sure I get that email and I will, I'm happy to reply back to the individual. Who does that? Doug, should that come from you or someone from, from the planning commission?
Generally, Nicole can do it. Since it was addressed to planning commission, just thank you for your comments, they were forwarded to the board or to the planning commission.
And there's a lot in that letter, so maybe there are some things that with more time we will revisit. Anything else that we should discuss before we hit our agenda? Okay, item four, the Phoenix Academy of Performing Arts. Nicole, do you want to lead us in that, please?
I'm just pulling up the agenda now. So the site of this plan is at 118 Hawbaker Industrial Drive, which is located in the industrial district of the I-1. This plan is proposing to change the former use that was a wholesale warehouse building. And the building, the existing building is 15,350 square feet and they want to modify it to a gymnastics and dance training facility. The first floor will be occupied by offices, a reception area, floor exercise areas, restrooms, lockers and a lunch slash meeting room. The second floor will have a preschool training area and an office. The fitness center use was added as a conditional use to the I-1 by the board on May 26, 2021. There is a discussion item with this plan, as there is no specific parking requirement for a fitness center. Staff did look at the full list of uses and parking ratios to find the next closest use. For this plan, staff recommends using the parking calculation for gymnasium, which is one parking space for every three sleep seats or occupants. The maximum capacity for this site is 154 occupants, which would mean 52 parking spaces, three of which would need to be ADA compliant. The applicant is requesting a waiver to provide, now this is a correction, at the resubmitted plans, they are now providing us with 47 parking spaces, two of which will be ADA, and they are showing space for five overflow park. And I do believe Mark Toretti is here to speak about this.
Thank you, Nicole. Mr. Toretti.
There, okay, there we go, just trying to unmute it. Yes, this is the former Wesco Distribution, they were, it was a lighting distribution facility, I think we did back in, I think around 2007 or 2009. And this township just approved a, to allow the, this type of dance and gymnastics studio as a conditional use for the industrial zone. And I'm here in behalf of my client, I think Evan Myers is here representing the Phoenix Academy of Performing Arts of Pennsylvania, so we'll go through very briefly with the plan. The, the site had 30 existing parking spaces on it, including one handicap, but they had some very large areas that suited more of the distribution use for that facility and so what we do, we went back and looked at the layouts and how the existing area could be utilized without really increasing the impervious coverage or adding on to the parking and we were able to increase with the area, I'm sorry. Okay, anyways, we, we were able to increase and add 17 parking spaces to the site without really expanding the pavement. And, and then also there is an area back by the dumpsters that could be used for five overflow, overflow spaces that over in that area there, they, the access to it is narrow, so we don't have the width to say formal official spaces, but there'd be five overflow spaces that would give you 52 spaces on the site. We also addressing some of the other comments from staff and from the other planning agencies. We are going to keep the existing dumpster for recycling and add another dumpster enclosure for dumpster. I mean, basically there was this one, one dumpster area out there, we are actually adding a second one, so it deals with both recycling and with, with the actual refuse. We have updated the landscaping, there was a little bit of landscaping that was missing along with what we've done with, where we have new perimeter parking spaces. We've added landscaping around there. We've also went back and verified the original lighting design and we've upgraded it where we needed to meet the parking requirements for the lighting ordinance, so all that has been taken care of and addressed. Also working with staff, we met with staff at the beginning of the project. What was originally a loading area in the front corner of the building? We are looking at having that be a drop-off area where people can come in, circle around the parking and then drop their, drop their kids off on the front corner of the building. The, the main entrance is kind of on the long end side of the building, right around where that handicap space and that parking island is. That's where the main entrance of the building is going to be, so we, we worked there and putting a drop-off area and a sidewalk in, so that would be more ease of access for drop-offs and pickups. The main issue, I think, on this project is looking at, says, there was no specific parking requirements and similar to what we did at the Gray Center, we went back and analyzed the uses for the facility and they're basically going to be having both gymnastics classes and dance classes during various hours of the day, you know, starting at, at about like nine in the morning and ending at about nine o'clock at night. The busiest times are basically from between 4:00 PM and 9:00 PM and based on the hour classes, you will have at the most between approximately 36 people at the facility at one time, there may be 20 gymnastics and 10 dance students and then six instructors. So that is, that would be the maximum anytime anybody's there during their normal operations. And if you go back and look at that for the parking requirements, one, just based upon the number of people that would be there, you would have for three people, they're actually there, I mean, there, one space for every three people, you really need 12 parking spaces. I don't know if that's really makes sense. Also, if we had, or if you looked at it more conservatively and said, one parking space for every person that's there, we don't, we would need 36 spaces and like I said, we have 47 proposed plus five overflow, so it does meet, you know, we, we feel, feel really good about having the the daily operational needs of the facility that we can meet those requirements for the parking, we have more than enough, you know, even, even to accompany some, you know, change of, of class periods there between the people coming and going. The main issue is with the about three to four times a year, they anticipate they, you know, could be having gymnastics competitions. And with those competitions, there's concern about how many people are going to be there. From their experience in the past, they are anticipating roughly approximately about 50 beneath the park, 50 cars there, from their past experience on, on there, so we still feel confident that we can handle the the amount of parking for those three to four times a year that they would have a gymnastics competition. And also, there is some on-street parking on Hawbaker Industrial Drive, I think that would be a fallback position initially to see how this goes, but that's kind of where, where we are like, have the site designed so we feel we can meet those requirements that they need. If you have any other questions regarding those, you know, those needs, Evan Myers is also here, he could talk more about that, but that's a brief summary of, of the parking waiver request and how we, you know, we, we feel that we can meet the needs of the facility both on the, for the daily operational needs and the three to four times a year when they would have a competition.
If, if, Mr. Sheriff, I might just give a little bit more information?
Yeah, yeah, please do, go ahead, Mr. Myers.
Thank you, I, I wanted to be mindful of some of the questions we got when we were here last time about parking. And one or two folks had asked me to check, go back and see how this compared to other places to, you know, take a temperature there, not just what we thought, but what was the experience of other places like this? So the first place we looked at was where, where this business is being a successor to Nitty Gymnastics, which was located out by the mall, they they're about, this facility is about 30% larger than that one. They had 15 spaces in front of the, in front of the building. Very rarely, I talked to people that were involved, very rarely that they actually go over that. Because unlike a gymnasium, this really is not a gymnasium, that wasn't, this is a school. And so there's, people get, kids get dropped off, some people may take classes, but there's a staggering of classes. And so the whole place isn't filled all the time, so the amount of spaces that we're proposing and going up from what we initially had seems certainly to well more than cover the local experience plus a few other places I contacted as well. By not having to put it more impervious surfaces, it obviously is more environmentally friendly than having to pave more for another, you know, four, five, six, eight spaces, whatever it might be. So that, that's another reason why we thought this would be a good solution. Also checked around for when there are competitions, as Mark mentioned, in other places, what is their experience for traffic? And the occupancy, as we heard, is 150, 50 something. We don't anticipate really to be near that amount, but even if we did, the experience of other places is generally that when there's a competition, four or five people come together in a car because you may have a parent drive three or four, or two or three kids, and so there's a, there's a lot more density of people and the cars are a lot less ability. Nobody we talked to had any more than 50 cars involved in those places, were actually were bigger facilities that allowed for more, more kids. Because you usually don't have that many, that, that allows, you know, 200 people or more and we're not going to, the capacity is not that big and we're not planning on having that many people there. So all the way around to answer the questions that were posed when we were here about a month ago about some of this stuff. We looked into all that, I, I checked with a number of people to get that information and this all seems to fit within that as well, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Planning Commission, any, any comments and thoughts? Mr. Payne, go ahead.
Yeah, clarification, where's the main entrance going to be, west or south side?
It will be on the west side, near that handicap space that's there, if she goes back to the plan. Yeah, right down, go down, right, right around in there, yep, and so we, we put a drop-off area in a sidewalk along that area, right on the other side of that island.
Okay, where you indicated, I call that the west side, or the south side, not the west.
Well, yeah, I mean, plan view or orientation, as I know, I was in source, I called it the long side.
Okay, the long side. Regarding the handicap space over on the short side, you could gain one more space if you brought that handicap space over next to the handicap unloading spot for that space on the long side, and you gain one parking space.
There, there is still a doorway over on that side, on the, on the, on the short side on the top, so I wanted to keep it for that access, just so there is one access on that side.
Okay.
Connectivity, is there a, so for my concern, it would be for the, you know, three, four times a year where there is a gymnastics competition. So my first question is if the, if, if people are going to park on the street, I didn't know, I actually drove by there on Saturday, but I didn't take notice. Is there a sidewalk that takes you to the front door to the street?
Okay, Nicole, if you could pull the plan up again, sorry about that. We, we looked, I mean, there wasn't, and so we are, we are adding a crosswalk and a little bit of a sidewalk that goes out to the street there, you can see it in the one area. We looked at the other side of the driveway. um in the one area. We looked at the other side of the driveway and due to the grades, we could not get that to work. And so um the only place we could get it to work was coming the painted crosswalk and then what the crosswalk ends and then there's a concrete walk that goes out to the sidewalk. And even to get that to work, we had to take out some of the existing sidewalk um to meet, to to get a um a landing area on the, on the public sidewalk.
And if I might, I know, if I might on those a few occasions that we do this, uh we would have signage there so that people know exactly where to go. And in fact, um a a parent or two volunteering, wearing a vest could be there to um like almost like a a crosswalk for school to make sure that um everybody's safe for those few occasions that that happens.
Thank you. Mr. Myers, has anyone talked to the neighboring bank to see if they would um participate in having a a true overflow parking lot in the event um that you get more cars than you had anticipated?
Well, we put out a fewers actually to to um, haven't heard back yet, but um since they, these you generally occur on weekends, um and the bank certainly um my guess may be open Saturday morning and some of the other businesses up the driver in the um cold asap or not open then is, that's definitely a possibility uh for an overflow, talking to the owner of the building. He he didn't see why that, knowing the neighbors uh and doing businesses with them, why that would be an issue. And that's another possibility that we, you know, we could do that if we ever got into that situation, although I really don't anticipate that. I mean, our aim is to make sure everybody can park on premises um if possible, because uh we want uh, you know, people to be right there and able to go, to able to go in. So um we're because we're also thinking about the parents and and the kids and wanting everybody to be self-contained and and safe. But but yes, to answer your question, uh we're looking into that absolutely.
Planning Commission, any other thoughts, comments? So Planning Commission, just so we're aware, Hall Baker Drive, you can park on the right now, you can park on the side of the road that is next to this building. Um there is no parking on the other side of the street. And I guess Doug, that's just due to the the width of the street, is that correct?
Correct.
So it's twen- this road is twenty-six feet wide and for us to have parking on both sides of the street, how wide would it need to be, just out of curiosity?
Twenty-eight, I believe.
Oh, probably, we probably want more than that. We probably, we'd need two eleven-foot lanes plus two seven-foot parking lanes. What's that get you to thirty-five?
Okay. Okay, um. So uh fellow Planning Commission members, any other thoughts, comments?
Well, it seems to me like there's plenty of space, I mean, for for what they're gonna need. I think they've taken that into consideration. And along that red line that on our maps, you know, on that side of the street on How Baker, that should should handle it. And if they needed more for some reason, what's the, what's the business directly behind them that connects to, that's right there um on the back of their building? Is that um?
Autobody.
Yeah.
Forget the name, but it's Autobody Show.
Yeah, G W, something like that, G W Autobody?
Are they even open on Saturdays?
But don't, don't, let me, just don't caution, and let me caution you, don't start talking about letting them park on somebody else's private lot.
No, but I
Not our, that's not our decision. Um, you know, whether the neighbors open or not, or even there's a parking lot right there is really irrelevant unless they come to us with a shared parking agreement.
Okay.
Um Township, is there any question about setting precedence? If we grant this to this applicant, do we?
Well, if if you grant their waiver, then if they do have a problem, we don't have any means to go back and ask them to put in more parking. Um an alternative might be to have them revise the plan and show where they might put in some additional parking to get up to the fifty-two. And then we kind of hold it in abeyance that, you know, if they, if they don't need it and they never have to build it, but if they if we see a parking issue there, then we could uh force them into adding it at some point in the future.
I like that, Doug. That to me sounds like a logical approach with a bit of an insurance policy, uh a backup plan if this plan isn't, doesn't work.
Well, um we do have fifty-two spaces, just five of them due to the existing pavement and access have a near or drive out to get to. We have forty-seven that are all called official parking spaces. And we have five overflow that could basically meet that fifty-two requirements. So I mean, it's just the 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 um the the access to, and that's something, if you did have a competition, you'd probably be having the staff park back in that area as they'd be the ones who know how to get get back there and also probably the first to come and the last to leave.
So just for clarity, um Doug, my question is if we as the township want the ability to be able to say, hey, um applicant, you know, it is now time for you to expand your own parking, once we grant this, we don't have any recourse if it's not working other than you know, the applicant said they'd be willing to do it, but that would be it. Am I correct? How do we generate, how do we, how do we get this to to my my thoughts is, would be to let's, let's, I would like to see us agree to this, but I also would like to see us to have the ability to revisit it in two years from now. And if at that point, there's a bunch of competitions and parking's a problem, we have the ability to go back and say, applicant, we now would like you to uh uh give us the extra five spots. Mr. Myers, go ahead.
Yeah, tha- thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um that's something we would be, we would be willing to do uh today. And obviously, time is of the essence for us to get this moving because we want to get this uh underway by uh by the fall when the kids are back at school and thinking about this stuff. But we agree even beyond that from the idea that um we don't want there to be a problem either. That wouldn't be good for business if people can't find places to park. So we would be willing, if we could do this, to stipulate to that, to we would come back, revisit it um in two years, as you suggested, and um and and if we, um if there was a, you determined that we needed to permanently add uh a few additional spaces, that we would figure out how to do that because obviously we can. But again, um it's something that um is not as environmentally friendly, more costly, all those types of things when we already have parking available on on the road, etc. So and I don't think we're gonna need it anywhere.
Yeah, and hopefully it wouldn't be needed. So is, at the Planning Commission, are we in agreement that it if um does anyone want to uh throw out a motion to uh approve with an insurance policy in twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-three to revisit it to see at that point, is it working? And if it's not, ask the applicant to give us more parking.
I think that's fair. Yeah, I motioned that we stipulate
in two years.
Two years seems reasonable, yeah.
Yeah. Everybody, uh uh so uh anyone want to, Harry, do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays?
Nay.
One nay?
Well, here's, here's the bad news. We got, how many ayes did you get? Did you get four ayes? And one nay?
Yeah.
Okay, now that passes, sorry. I, you're good.
Can I hear a little bit more on the nay? What was the thought process on that real quick?
I'm sorry, I just, I just think we're forcing something here that just seems unreasonable. And I don't, I'm not sure in two years, we don't have a huge problem, but that's okay. So long as there's something out there, I guess I can live with it, but I just felt like I needed to vote nay.
Very good. And I appreciate your uh your your individual thoughts. Uh motion, Harry. Anything more we should discuss on the parking?
I just have one question, and that's probably for God. Um if we, if we uh do this with this stipulated, does that send a, set a pattern or a trend um for other people asking for variances or?
No.
No, okay.
I mean, this is also, this is where the conditional use part of this issue comes in, where we can put you know, particular conditions based on the nature of the business too.
Okay, thank you.
Our next item.
If I might, um, thank you very much. Appreciate all the time and effort that uh Planning uh Commission's put into this and the staff. As Mark said, we met with the staff a number of times and talked and I know Mark hasn't talked to them and you've all considered this, so um again, we we appreciate it very much.
And Mr. Mark, a- and we appreciate the, your willingness to come into Patton Township and and go out on a limb and make and start a new, new venture.
Well, hopefully it works, it works well for everybody. Thank you. That's that's the aim.
Yeah.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Item four, the View. Minor addendum uh to the parking plan. Does anyone want to tee that up?
Yep, I got it. Uh so the View Apartments that is located out on Tofftree's Avenue um is submitting a plan to place two pre-manufactured sheds to be used by maintenance personnel on the existing parking lot. Uh this will reduce the number of required spaces that they have built by eleven. They did provide us with some historical parking data that shows some justification for being able to reduce the total parking from four ninety-seven to four eighty-six. Um and as I think many of you know, the the final plan for this, which was at the time called The Grove, was approved back in uh two thousand and twelve. And then Brian, I don't know, do you want me to show those pictures now or do you guys want to um hear from the developer first?
Um, I, uh, yeah, let's, let's uh, uh, let's show the picture. So so guys, as Nicole is getting the pictures up, Saturday morning, I uh took a little drive and just, I I went to this area. And and quite honestly, the first thing that I was surprised is they, the photos that we looked at showed a parking lot with cars in the parking lot. So I go to this spot expecting to see cars in a parking lot and instead I find these sheds that are clearly, they're erroneously placed there. They have air conditioning. Um and in addition to the, uh so the first thing I did is I just counted the number of spots. And I had to count it three times because I'm like, well, clearly the applicant must know what they're talking about. No offense, I don't want to shoot the messenger, but it, you know, with the, the bigger garage takes up seven, that's the smaller garage. That's five parcels. The reason why it's five, if you can go, well, all right, let's take, we'll stop at this one. That's the bigger shed. That is seven parcels. Not counting the sprayer in this uh that that traffic equipment, we're not even counting that. Just the shed itself is seven. If Nicole, if you can go to the other slide, that is five. So seven plus five is twelve.
Plus it sticks out from the parking spaces, about eight feet.
So when the applicant comes to us, us and says eleven, when it's twelve, I really would like the applicant to go back and look at this fuzzy math. Because to me, I don't want to take the conversation further about all the statistical analysis when we're, we're, we're wrong with the number of spots. How are we to believe the information from the applicant when it's a difference of eleven versus twelve? So I guess I'd like the applicant to give us a little bit more accurate accuracy and then next month revisit this with hopefully accurate data. That's my opinion. I, you know, the fact that it even is here in the first place is I I I was quite surprised. I actually expected to see a parking lot, not a bunch of sheds that already have heat and A C. That's my opinion, uh Planning Commission. Um you guys may have other opinions. Uh but I I guess I like the integrity that when applicants bring us information that we can start out with accurate numbers. And when you're car, counting parking spots, why you can miss a spot, I I just have issues with.
I I agree.
Couple comments or question for staff, first of all. It's on the so-called smaller shed. Like I said, the the parking spaces are about sixteen foot deep, shed sticks out about eight foot past the parking space. Then the one door has a ramp coming off of it. But I look at Google Earth and it's about five foot, so that only leaves twelve foot over to the opposite parking spaces in the island. Is that sufficient or what?
Jim, it's because they've been operating these, these buildings for I don't know how long. They have, I mean, it's like there's been no, there's been no uh attempt to recognize that they are operating a business in a township that has zoning. I'm in a state college with, and it's not the Wild West. I have the opinion that this should be tabled until we have accurate information. But that's my opinion. I don't want to speak on behalf of others on the Planning Commission.
Well, the way the thing was worded, I thought it was a little bit disingenuous to say that they want to do this because they want to place sheds there.
When they already have.
I would agree with you.
September twenty twenty. September twenty twenty, Google Earth shows those sheds there. Unfortunately, the previous date is clear back two thousand and sixteen, but sometime before September twenty twenty, those sheds were put in place.
So don't you think that the applicant then, once they're recognized that they're in violation of our code, could bring us something that had some accuracy?
I I would hope so.
So this isn't about, uh, we're not here to shoot the messenger, but I think the message is, I would like to discuss this when we have accurate data. Until then, I I don't see a reason to waste our time.
I agree.
I agree.
I concur.
So.
This will be back on the next July Planning Commission agenda.
Thank you. Item eight, status on pending items.
Now, there's items.
Have another plan.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I missed it. Uh, my apologies. Item six, Confor Farm.
So this plan is a replot and the site is out in the rural district on Confor Farm Lane. It's reconfiguring existing parcels, it's not creating any new parcels. And it's going to take approximately seven acres from Lot One R and give it to um tax parcel eighteen dash two dash eleven seed. That's going to take that from about three acres up to about ten acres. So it's pretty straightforward and I can pull up attachments and see where it's located. View over here. Not sure if we have anybody with us to talk about it. You guys just want to talk amongst yourselves. Oh, hi.
Hi, Ms. Rob Kressler, we're in there right here. Yes, this, you want me to speak about this now?
Yes, please, Mr. Kressler, thank you.
Sure. Um yeah, this is uh the, a two lot replot. Um there was the Confor Joel and Donna's Confor's lot, which was twenty-seven acres, and they're looking to um replot their lot with the granddaughter's lot, uh Lance and Carly Sebold. And uh they're basically taking the uh the the rental house and the barn and giving them that, you know, seven acres to make the uh tax parcel along five fifty, a ten-acre lot as, as Nicole had said, and so a 10 acre lot, as, as Nicole had said, and so it'll be a, a 10 acre lot, and then the lot one of the Confor subdivision will be about 20 acres now. But it's no new houses, no new lots, no new accesses to 550, it's just replotting two existing dwellings into two different sized parcels. That's nothing, there's no new, you know, no new utilities required or anything like that, so that's a pretty simple, you know, replot.
Fellow Planning Commission, any questions?
Are we allowed to ask why, or is that not in our purview? I mean, it seems like if you're replotting something, you're eventually planning to put in new buildings and stuff.
It's just, I think he already gave a good enough description.
Okay.
Going to the granddaughter, so.
All right.
You don't really get to ask why.
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as they're compliant with our regulations.
Okay.
We, we can't, we can't guess what their intentions are, we can't make a decision on what we think their intentions might be.
Okay.
If they want to subdivide, they have to follow our regulations. And as staff has noted, that this complies with our current regulations with completion of whatever comments were on the letter.
Any to approve? Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any nays? Motion carried.
All right, Planning Commission, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Same to you.
Thank you.
Next up, item seven, subdivision and land development ordinance update to require streetlights at intersections. Our expert Nicole, please enlighten us.
We've talked about this before, I believe, back in April, it was a work session item, this came from the Barger Fields Plan that we looked at, the Planning Commission stressed concern over lighting at the new intersections proposed there, the board agreed and asked the Planning Commission to consider updating our subdivision and land development ordinance to require streetlights at new intersections. And I believe when we talked about it in April, everybody was pretty much on board with staff's recommended changes, and so we just need to make it official. By having a vote to go to the board.
Any further discussion, Planning Commission? If not, do we have a motion?
I motion.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carried. Thank you, Nicole.
Sure.
Item eight, pending items. Nicole, I'll let you have it for again.
So there are a lot, because we haven't had an official meeting in a while, so I will kind of take you through the highlights, if that's okay. Ken Highlands had to go back and forth, but that has been conditionally approved, the 101 Hobacre Industrial Drive rezoning request was approved. The two parcels out of Douglas Drive, that rezoning request was denied. The, let's see, as we know, the fitness center use was added as a conditional use to the industrial district, and our sign ordinance update is still ongoing, I do believe we plan to bring that back next month. If anyone has any questions about all the stuff that's happened at the board, let me know.
Any, any further questions, Planning Commission?
Nope.
No.
Item nine, reports. Nicole, is that you again?
Unless Mr. Payne would like to speak for a minute.
I'll, I'll make it short and sweet, the, there's two attachments, 9A1 and 9A2, which were the, the minutes from the last two Housing Task Force meeting, and kind of a recap right there in the reports. Last meeting, we broke into smaller groups, housing, vision, and zoning. So, I, I was torn between visioning and zoning, but since I'm on the Planning Commission, logic said go to the zoning, so. But we started discussing various things in the small groups, and we'll come back to the entire group with information and sharing as we go along. So it was a, it's a big step forward.
Appreciate all your efforts on that, I don't know, on, on a different note, our, our email from this afternoon, Doug, is there any way like we can get money going in, in this direction from this windfall of cash? The 1.6 million?
Well, it's all going to go through a process, so if you think that's an important use of the money, you should provide those comments in reply to that email I sent out.
Okay. Wait, yeah, and you, you're needing that from us fairly soon?
No, no, there'll be, you've got, you've got a few weeks to think about it.
Doug, when I read the email, I just, it, it, it looks like there is a lot of stipulations to that money, so how do we even begin to weigh in on it when we wouldn't really have a whole lot of understanding about all the different stipulations?
Well, I would say whatever you think is important that the township do with 1.6 million, you should, you should reply, that's.
Okay.
Think, I mean, we'll sift, sift through it, there's some, there's an ability to move things around to make funding available for things that aren't on that, directly on that list, let me put it that way.
Doug, do you think that the townships will kind of collectively work together to try and exhaust this pile of cash, I mean, maybe as a community?
The intent is to go out and get ideas from, you know, all the constituents, so you're, you're the first people, the ABC committees are the first people that I reached out to, along with township employees, so they both got a version of what you saw today. We'll be going out to our, the other agencies, I don't have my list right in front of me right now, let me see, here it is. So I'll be going out also to our partner agencies like COG, CAT, and CNET, ask them for input, we'll reach out to the public in general, get their input, obviously, the Board of Supervisors will get to weigh in, and everything will go into a hopper, and we'll start funneling things down, we aren't going to do anything quickly, I probably not, will not spend any of this money until next year, 2022.
Yeah.
So we're going to take a deliberate look at this and figure out what's best for the community.
Yeah, so I, I guess what I was really, so it, I wanted to hear from you that when we, when we're looking at this, we shouldn't just look at Patent Township, we should look beyond, because it looks like that, that is a possibility, at least.
Yeah, you notice there was, you know, we can make payments to businesses and individuals who were impacted by COVID to bring them up, if that's something we want to do, so I'd ask, there's, there's two parts to the little survey, if you haven't gone to it yet, one is just a dialogue box, give us your, give us your recommendations, I think there's three or four dialogue boxes, if you have multiple good ideas that you want to share with, with me and everybody else, and then there's a little ranking exercise, I think Scott ate, eight categories of expenditures and asking you to rank from one to eight to give us a sense of what's the highest priority category might be for you.
Good, okay, thank you, Doug. Anything else on pending items, and I'm sorry, anything else on reports before we go on to other business? All right, item 10, other business, electric vehicles. Nicole, tee us up.
So I just wrote this up as a matter of record to summarize the conversation we had about electric vehicle charging infrastructure and what we discussed at our April 12th work session, so it just basically states that we took a look at it and that we came to the decision that we think the market will continue to drive development of the infrastructure.
Yeah. Very good. Planning Commission, any other, or staff, any other comments on this? All right, do we have, it's now time to adjourn, if we have a motion to adjourn? A second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, meeting adjourned. Now, it looks like we're going into our planning, our work session. Nicole? You're up.
All right, so bicycle parking, the idea is take a look and consider recommending a required minimal, minimum bicycle parking standards, the way this is written is that it would be in multifamily residential, commercial, and mixed-use developments in the township to encourage connectivity, and it would help promote potential recommendations in the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan that COG should be putting out by the end of this year, and it also helps implement the current Center Region Bike Plan. So I put together a table of the Center Region municipalities that require bicycle parking, you can see that most of them do, including here in Patent Township, we do require it in our mixed-use overlay districts, and they do kind of range to kind of minimal, and maybe in just one or two zoning districts, to a little bit more blanket, as in Ferguson Township actually has it as part of their SALDO to require bicycle parking. And a few of the municipalities, including Ferguson and The Borough, have incentives, and even some of those incentives can include a reduction in motor vehicle parking, so there is a lot of room for us to, to work here, a lot of different ideas that we could pursue, so I really wanted to kind of pull together this preliminary information for all of you to get a look at it, I did realize today that the model ordinance did not get out, sent out with the original, but I think that's all right, because it does get a little bit more into specifics that I don't think we're ready for yet, but I wanted to, to get this information out to you so we can be thinking about it, but this conversation can be more of an introduction to get the wheels turning, so to speak, and that we should figure out first where we would like to see bicycle parking, as in, do we want it to be by zoning district, do we want it to be by type of use, or do we want to have it be kind of a standalone ordinance, or something that we kind of fold into our SALDO? So I think if we can start with that tonight and, and see if we can come to some sort of consensus on that, and I did want to mention that I have been working with Trish Meek on this, the CRPA, who, as most of you know, specializes in kind of the bike and pedestrian connectivity and those types of projects, and she has already agreed to come to our July meeting, and I think she's going to put together a little presentation for us, and then we can kind of start to work into some of the more specifics as we see fit at that time. So a lot of the information that I've presented tonight will probably carry over into the next meeting or meetings as, as we need them, so I don't necessarily think we have to cover all of the ground tonight, but as I mentioned, I think we should start the conversation with exactly where we would like to see the parking, so I don't know if anybody has kind of thought about it and has any specific ideas, I don't know if anybody's had a chance to look at any of these guides that are online and has anything that they would like to mention.
I'd like to ask a question, what is SALDO?
The Subdivision and Land Development Ordinance.
Oh, okay.
So Nicole, I mean, what, what, what is a reasonable expectation, so that, you know, if, if I want to ride my bike, I guess I'd like to be able to take it to a park, and maybe I want to go on a, a three-hour hike, and I actually want to come back and know my bike's still there, that it wasn't stolen. You know, so, what areas are, I'm, I'm guessing that this would include commercial areas, park areas. To me, that makes sense, but what do I know?
Well, if that's what you would like to see, I don't know what other people think.
Planning Commission?
Would that be by, that would be by use then, right?
Yes, the way Brian phrased it, it would be more of the by use as opposed to strictly by zoning type or district, rather.
Well, I think if you're going to ride a bike in the area, then you're going to be somewhat active, and you're probably going to naturally end up at a, perhaps a park, and if you're really active, maybe you'll hike for hours, and then when you come back, you just kind of want your bike there, so to me, that would make sense, but then also, you're going to be going to other areas, you know, to, buy what you need, groceries, food, whatever, so I, I clearly think that that also makes sense.
Quick question for staff. Say on commercial, can it be retroactive with a grace period?
No.
No, developers, people who build new buildings are only subject to those regulations that are in effect at the time they came in to get their permit.
Can I ask any, I don't want to interrupt anybody. Okay, so Nicole, my recollection is, we as a community are, where are we, I know, guys, the Planning Commission, that there's a, a letter grade that you get based on how, how good of a bike community you are, and are we not like a B, where are we?
So the region just got silver, and I think Doug, aren't we working on something for Patent Township specifically now? To be designated a bicycle-friendly community?
I think there, there's a, there's a designation for the entire Center Region that's silver as a bicycle-friendly community, then we've applied as a bicycle-friendly business, and university, I think, is the silver designation as a bicycle-friendly university, these are all proffered to us by the American League of Bicycleists, I think.
So to me, it would make sense to do what we would need to do to get a gold.
By, by recall, we start with bronze and then go to silver and then go to gold, so we can only get a bronze starting out.
Well, we already have the silver.
Well, the region has.
Go ahead, Nicole.
I said the region has the silver.
Uh, and what does Patton have?
I think. Well, we, we, there's different designations, there's community designations, and our community designation covers all six Center Region municipalities, so, and then we've applied for a business designation, which you can go to the American, we can send you, we can send you the link to the American League of Bicycleists, and you can read up to about how, or we can ask Trish to come in and talk about that, but, and then, like I said, so as a community, we're already at silver, because we're, the whole, all six municipalities are considered together at that point.
I think as a community, we're doing outstanding, and I think that the bicycle path along Valley Vista, it gets used all the time, so I, I, you know, I'm, I think we're doing great, I think it's whatever we would need to do to get us to a gold. I guess Trish will answer that.
I know.
Gold.
Oh, well, I, I just was going to say, out, like where I am, I think the biggest concern, you know, for people riding bikes is going to be safety, and so the more, the more we can strive for that, that would be great, because you know, if you, if you've got like teenagers or tweens, you, you don't want them going out on a lot of the roads up here, because the, the, it's so narrow on the edges, so the more connectivity we can have, I know there are a few that connect out here, but not too many.
Yeah, we got a trick up our sleeve for Meeks Lane someday.
Oh, really?
I forgot what it is, Doug, what is it, it's something. There's a development that's coming through, and we're going to help, we're going to do, it'll be helpful for those folks along the, some areas of Meeks, not all, just some.
And we're kind of getting off, we're getting off the bicycle parking.
Oh, this is just, this is for parking, okay.
Thank you, Doug. Any more discussion on bicycle parking? Any more discussion on bicycle parking?
Does anybody else want to weigh in on the idea of making this more of a kind of per-use idea as opposed to just strictly by zoning districts? Because Brian kind of floated that out there that we could look at, you know, commercial spaces and parks and different types of uses as opposed to sticking with the zoning districts as.
It makes more sense to do it by use. I mean, because because one type of zoning is going to cover a whole, you know, a whole lot of different types of properties. And I don't know, I think by use, unless, I do, I think by use, we should probably.
And just to go with that, in that attachment that I sent out today, there is this table that we could kind of use as a guide, if that's how we want to do it. It does break it down by the general use category and then kind of gives more specific uses that would fall under that for bicycle parking. And then this kind of stuff we can, can come later, but if you guys are kind of happy with this format, I can use this as sort of the jumping off point.
I think it seems like it covers everything.
Planning Commission, any other thoughts, comments?
And if anybody has any specific questions they think of, like I said, I've already talked to Trish and she plans on coming next month. So if you think of questions, you can email them to me or other staff and I can get those to Trish so she can be prepared to address that coming in. And kind of maybe, or she might already have something that she wanted to, to address with that so she can just be more prepared.
Very good. Any further discussion, Planning Commission? Very good. Is there anything else we should add to our work session?
That's all I had.
Very good. I guess that calls it today.
I have one, one comment.
Go ahead, Jim.
Or since we got off topic on the bicycle parking, you mentioned on the 1.6 million about affordable housing. Something to consider in your comments and stuff is transportation is key to affordable housing. For affordable housing is, it also needs good transportation possibilities.
Yeah, and Jim, didn't our, and Doug, didn't our catibus, didn't we, due to COVID, haven't, haven't a lot of those rural routes been reduced?
Yep.
Yeah, there's been a lot of cutbacks. Cat, it will be putting some of the routes back online come fall.
Yeah.
Not all of them though.
Most. They did get some funding, their own, so they were able to keep the doors open.
Yeah. Good point, Jim. All right, guys, gals, have a good night.
Okay.